Thank you for joining us. The Columbia's editorial board is pleased to welcome candidates for Camas City Council. I'm Greg Jane, I'm the editorial page editor at the Columbia, and I will let the other board members introduce themselves.
I'm Will Campbell, editor of the Columbia.
Hi, I'm Colin Keller, I'm the assistant news editor of the Columbia.
And before we move on, just a reminder, we are recording this, we will post it unedited on our website and our YouTube channel. Now we'll move on to the candidates. Please take one to two minutes, introduce yourselves, explain why you are running for this position, then we'll move on to specific policy questions. So we'll start with Lesley.
So I'm Lesley Lu Allen. I've been on city council since 2021. I'm one of four former prosecuting attorney in land use law and environmental law attorney, and more importantly, I'm a mom to four beautiful children and a wife. And frankly, it was during COVID that I decided to run for public office. I saw our country and our city falling apart. Something that really bothered me was watching citizens attack one another and attack local businesses online. And I just didn't think that really captured the spirit of Camas. We want to support our local businesses, so that actually was a galvanizing factor. And also, I was sitting back and just watching what was happening, and I complained about it. And my oldest child said, well, what are you going to do about him? And that's when I put on my tennis shoes and I went out and I knocked on 5,000 doors and I got elected. And I'm running again because we've made so much great progress over the past four years. I love working with my peers. I love working to find common sense solutions to those issues that are facing Camas. And I'm really proud, like I said, of the work that we've done. We've had a couple of recent unanimous resolutions and votes that I think have played a role regionally as well. The smaller cities are starting to look at what really benefits their citizens and taking a stand. So for those reasons, I'm running for reelection and I hope to get everybody's vote.
Thank you, Lesley.
Thanks for having me. My name is Massa, it's Ryan with NASA. I'm long-term Camas resident since I've immigrated to USA in 2007. I have two daughters, goes to Camas Publica School, and I'm really grateful for that. We are facing lots of challenges in Camas, a lot of infrastructure issues in Camas that needs a leader who understands infrastructure issues and how we can deliver it based on a practical solution. I believe my experience and my, I'm a professional background and experience can bring a good value to address those challenges. I have master degree in transportation and environmental engineering with over 20 years' experience in managing and delivering infrastructure projects in our region. From small sidewalk projects that connects neighborhood to larger projects such as ministry promises. I was part of the project team before I moved to be a public employee at Port of Brooklyn. So I believe the projects I've done, the project I'm doing now as a project manager, makes me a good understanding of how city runs, how we can bring resources, funding, to address those challenges in the city. My leadership is based on collaboration, listening, and making sure we focus on delivering the projects. I've served public in a different capacity for over decades, 10 years. As I mentioned, I'm currently public employee, but also I've served public in variety of volunteering positions such as HRA treasurers. And for the past five years, I was a planning commissioner in Camas. That was a great opportunity for me to connect with our community, understanding the challenges we have, and work with the staff, with the public on land use decision, on planning for the future, to make sure it's aligned with the values we have in Camas. So I believe the combination of my professional experience as well as public service experience and passion to serve the community can bring a great value to face these challenges.
Great, thank you, and thanks to both of you again. I want to start with one issue that is affecting all cities in the county, and the county itself is homelessness. What has Camas done to approach that? What should it do differently? And where's the city go from there? We'll start with Lesley.
Well, that's something I'm very, very proud of work that I took a lead in doing. So before Grants Pass overturned the Boise case, I made sure that we put in environmental buffers in our camping code because we spend so much time and energy preserving our beautiful park system that everybody loves. And I wanted to make sure that we took those environmental considerations into our camping code. So now we have, since Grants Pass, we unanimously passed a camping ban in Camas. That's in alignment with our strategic vision. It protects our resources, it protects our parks, it protects our public lands as they were intended and as they are intended to be. So I'm very, very proud of that. I think it's really important that you have somebody on council that has not only an environmental law background, but a legal background that can look at some of these cases that impact what cities and municipalities are able to do. And I know that there was a lot of cities throughout Washington State that really were suffering under the Boise law. Their hands were tied, and like Camas, we don't have the financial resources to do what some of the other bigger cities might be doing. So this was really important for us to move forward. And I think the other smaller cities are taking a look at what we did in Camas and following our lead. So I'm really excited that we became regional leaders.
So, Camas passed the camping ban, how is that enforced? What happens when people are invited?
Right, so, well, there's the legislation and then there's the enforcement aspect of it. And I get people frustrated sometimes saying, hey, I see somebody out there, what do I do? Our, what our goal is intended to do is to connect people with the resources that they actually need. So instead of just remaining outside in the cold, we want to get them the services that they actually need. So that's our metric of success, is how many people are we exiting from the state of homelessness and getting the help and the resources that they actually need. I think it's a very compassionate approach. I think Doug Quinn, our city administrator, was quoted, I believe, in the Columbia, but maybe elsewhere, that this is, again, this is in line with a compassionate approach while also balancing the needs of our community and the safety of our community.
And what if somebody declines services?
You know, I don't, can't remember the actual ordinance off the top of my head, but I believe that it's three times, and then there's a fine. So you offer help three separate times and then a fine is kicked in. Or, I actually really can't remember.
In that situation, are they equipped to pay a fine?
No, probably not.
And then what happened?
Well, that's the thing, that's an enforcement part of the ordinance. So we have several individuals downtown. It seems like we hear of new individuals coming into our community on a regular basis. We learned that through the council, through the homeless, they were giving out vouchers, one-night-state vouchers, and Camas was the only place that was accepting those vouchers. It was actually a place on the Camas-Washougal border. So that's our approach, though, is to say, hey, just temporarily putting somebody up for one night or giving them a tent or allowing them to sleep outside is not compassionate. We need to actually get them to the services that they need.
Okay, thank you. Massa, what do you see in Camas' approach to homelessness?
So homeless definitely is a complex problem for the whole region. And in Camas, I agree, we have limited resources to provide the services they need. And one of the solutions that Camas found is to contribute to the Clark County program through the document recording fee. So our first responders that they see homeless, they guide them through the available services in the region that can help them with shelter, with other services. But I want to also say that we should be more, we should be more participating in this solution in our region. Maybe more partnership with the region because we don't want to really send our problems to the neighboring cities. So it's showing the partnership, also following with them on the problem solving, it's a big one. Another solution to that is we can keep some of those fee in Camas, work with our nonpartisan organizations such as churches. They already very involved with our community. And they, for those folks that they don't want to leave city, because a lot of this homelessness are people who are retired in Camas, but they cannot afford leaving Camas, but still want to stay. So maybe working with nonprofit companies, they provide hot and cold weather shelters and pay them for their cost, that can be another solution. Overall, this is a regional problem and we need to be part of the problem solving.
Did you agree with the ordinance passed by Camas? Would you have voted in favor of that to ban camping?
If I was a council member, considering the budget deficit we have, we can't even pay our firefighters the budget they need, I would agree with that. But I would agree, but I also want to say we should not really ignore the problem. We have to be more proactive, working more closely with our neighboring city.
And Lesley, she mentioned, brought up working in collaboration with other cities. Now, one Vancouver official characterized it as Camas said, go to Vancouver, they have resources. Do you think, has, do you think Camas has done that? Is that a fair?
I don't think so. I don't think that's a fair characterization at all. And I don't think that myself or my peers in passing this resolution are ignoring the problem. And I think that we've taken a good, hard look. I mean, I've been on the homeless subcommittee since getting elected to office since 2021. We do work collaboratively with our regional partners. The mayor sits on ECHO, the Indian Community Homeless Organization. And I think Mayor Hogan took offense to that statement. I know that because he told me, I think that we have limited resources. We do have nonprofit organizations that do come in and help. And myself, I'm a Rotarian, we have Meals on Wheels, we do a lot for our community. I know specific individuals who are homeless in downtown, I know them by name. I know that our community members go and buy them cups of coffee and meals and put them up in a hotel at night. Our community is very loving, our community is very caring. And, but we do not have the resources to pay for storage or hazmat teams. Just simply do not have the capability that other big cities have. And that is a problem, it is a regional problem, and it's one that I have been working on and addressing with my peers for years.
Good, well, thank you, Colin.
Let's talk about the regional fire authority. I'm curious where you go stand on that. And so, Massa, let's start with you first up.
I'm sorry, one minute. This is a ballot measure, and as a city council member, I could be in violation of the Public Disclosure Commission. She's able to speak freely on this matter, I am not. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, that situation.
I'd say, let's go ahead and ask the question, answer it the best you can, so we can understand the position.
Thank you.
So, Camas has been one of the safest city in the state of Washington, and that is to the dedication of our firefighters and first responders. However, our firefighters have facing big challenges. Staff shortage, old equipments, and that needs maintenance and replacement. And where we are at the budget-wise right now, our general fund cannot really afford, or they don't, we don't have resources to pay them for everything they need. This is a time, as a community, we have to step in and show our support to our firefighters by providing them with the resources and budget they need. Public safety is one of my first priority. And because of that, I voted yes to the last RFA measure when it came out in April. And I'm gonna go, say yes to the RFA that comes this November. I understand that the last measure was not successful because of some budgeting issues. So if I'm a council member, I make sure this budget goes to firefighter to hire new staff and then have their equipment improved. I would say it's really important to send a message out to the public. So I hope we have our community support to give the firefighters what they need so we can keep the safety in Camas.
Do you agree with the property tax cut that has been proposed at the 71 cents if the RFA passes this time?
I didn't, yes, the numbers was something that people had a problem with. So I was trying to get information, talking with the city finance department, talking with the fire union, just to put together everybody's approaches or perspective, why these numbers are in some fashion, people are maybe disagree with the result of the other side. In general, I say I support tax increase when it comes to public health or public safety. And the general fund we have right now is not enough for all essential services we have to provide in Camas. So we all have to pay our share if we want to keep our city safe, without cutting other services. If we don't really increase tax to support our public safety, something else has to be cut. And normally, it goes directly to park recreational, the staff cutting, or our library gets impacted. So we have to bring budget from somewhere, there's no magic wand. And I really like, if people say no to RFA, I want to hear a practical solution to where the money would come from.
And Lesley, do you talk to them as much as you can?
Well, first of all, I'm proud that I have the fire endorsement. I think that I've worked really well with our fire union and firefighters. I attended a Fire Ops 101 training in Boise, I think in 2022. Wade, Fair Clock was my shadow. You have to put on all of the gear, you have to have the oxygen tank on your back, and you go through a series of different scenarios. So had a total newfound appreciation for what our men and women in the fire department go through on a regular basis. It's tough work, and they protect our citizens, and we need to protect those that protect us. With respect to the RFA, this is something that we have been discussing since before I got into office. I attended a joint Camas-Washougal meeting before actually I got sworn in. So we have studied this issue up one side and down the other. The ILA, the interlocal agreement, is not working, it will dissolve. Right now, if I can speak from just an educational perspective, you have a bunch of citizens now saying, wait, this was on the ballot in April, it failed, why is it on the ballot again? Well, legally, the requirements of the ILA require it to be on the ballot in November. I actually pushed for that to happen. I had learned through some discussions that the city was not wanting to put the issue back on the ballot in November. And I think it's really important for it to be back on the ballot.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, did the city council refer it to the ballot? How did it end up?
We discussed it in workshop and finally on the, in the regular meeting. But there was some discussion, not on public record, that they, certain city members did not want to go.
How did it end up on the ballot? Who put it there?
I can't remember, honestly, but I wanted it to go on the ballot, so I did push that forward.
I'm sorry.
Yep, so I think that the problem right now that a lot of people are having is, one, they don't understand why it's on the ballot for a second time. Legally, it's required to go back on the ballot under the ILA. The other issue, I think you asked about the 71 cents.
Right.
So the tension, at least, and this is all public record, so I'm not violating any rule here either, is that, I believe it was 61 cents in April, and it failed.
That's 60 or 61.
Yeah, and the fire union, I believe, had spent $30,000 to run that campaign, and it failed. So then we go up to 71 cents. And again, we're being taxed at 88 cents for fire. And yet, we're only at 71 cents, so we're holding back some money. And I think that's another area of contention that people have, especially the fire union. So during, I think it was August 4th, at that council meeting, the motion was made for 71 cents. And Councilmember John Noor amended the motion and moved it up to 80 cents. I seconded that motion. That amendment motion failed, and a majority of the council voted for the 71 cents.
And again, that's the reduction elsewhere in property taxes.
Yes.
Okay.
So there was quite a few individuals upset, I think, and you can go and look at the public record yourself. But the assumption was that the city was putting a AAA bond rating over the safety of its firefighters and its citizens. At least, that's what I was hearing from that meeting. So it's back on the ballot at 71 cents. And I think the cost to citizens, if it doesn't pass, is going to be higher than any separate taxing entity that people have concerns about. And I think that will be devastating for our city. I just do, so. But I think that I have strong relationships with my peers. I have strong relationships with the fire department. I have strong relationships with our police. I'm endorsed by walk-offs as well. So these, again, are issues that I've been working very hard and diligently on for the past four years. And I think it's significant that I received the endorsement from the fire union.
Okay, thank you.
Massa, can you tell me some ideas you have to support small businesses, maybe that are not happening?
So we have, first of all, I want to make sure, when I'm serving as a planning commissioner, the reason I joined actually that group, because I believe we need more mixed use in Camas. We need to diversify our tax revenue. Right now, the whole pressure is on property tax. And in order to diversify tax, one way is to bring, to promote and support the small businesses. So we have more, not just a small business, but also attracting corporates. So they come and we can generate some employment tax. My parents, they own a small business in downtown Camas, so that's personal to me. I understand how hard it is to run a small business. Definitely, the city has a big role in supporting the small businesses by providing a safe environment for them. And also, another aspect of that, I mentioned earlier, as a planning commissioner, and we are working on the land use and zoning that I believe can support the small businesses. By having a smart zoning plan, more higher density plan around downtown area, we can give the support that the small businesses need while also promoting those downtown events we've seen, like Camas Day or First Friday. There's a lot of great vibes and community come together, but also is a big support for the business owners in downtown Camas. So I believe city should continue working with other groups, like Chamber of Engineers or Downtown Associate, making sure the city provides support for them to bring off more events that is directly supports our small businesses.
You think you'd be supporting developers to build more apartments in downtown Camas?
Yes, downtown Camas, first of all, I want to talk about another initiative. Growth Management Act is mandated requirements from the state because of the housing shortage in the state of Washington. And that for Camas means 4,000 new homes for the next 20 years. It's a big challenge because we need to adopt that requirements while making sure our established neighborhood is not impacted or our infrastructures are not overwhelmed. And then, one way to address that requirements is to bring smaller housing units, especially where it's close to services, close to public transit. That makes sense to have higher density housing there. So one area for that is downtown Camas. To me, that's a win-win solution because it's close to those services I just mentioned. Also, higher density can support our small business in downtown Camas.
Massa, what do you think about density?
Yeah, well, I'm glad she agrees. I've been a big proponent of the downtown mill district, as I like to call it. When I first drove into town, it reminded me of the Mill District in Bend. They did a really nice job providing for mixed-use development. Geographically, it's almost identical to the Mill District in Bend. We've got the Columbia, and they've got the Deschutes River. So there's a lot of area to grow. Getting on council in 2021, I quickly learned, there's a narrative that we can't work with the mill or we just need to be hands-off. I want to develop that relationship with them. I want to partner with them and talk about a overlay of zoning to say, in the event that they sell, or in the event that they shut down entirely, what, how do we see those 660 acres become? We could have a lot of different types of housing, like you suggested. You have apartments, you could have condos on top, have all sorts of new businesses that would diversify the economic base in Camas. I believe that the Mill District in Bend, Oregon, generated $15 million in economic revenue for the city of Bend in the first year of operation, and that was years ago. So this could be a win-win. I foresee doing a hands-on children's museum on some of the property that's not utilized, really leaning into our heritage with recycling and paper. We have Dennis Hayes, who's an environmentalist from Camas. I just see that this would be a huge opportunity for Camas. I think the Growth Management Act has been misinterpreted by a lot of individuals without a proper legal background or understanding of the law. It's not to be a sword to say we have to grow. It is intended to say we have to grow responsibly and smart. And that's why, when I got on council, I asked, I said, why did you guys approve or start with the North Shore Subarea Plan instead of focusing on the downtown Subarea Plan first? Because we already have cut down all the trees in the downtown area. We have an existing infrastructure already in downtown, so why didn't we start there? That, to me, makes the most sense, and I'm proud to say that I have one peer who is very opposed to even discussing any kind of solution that involved the mill. And she's now on board with that, and I think that's great because we do, we need to work collaboratively with our peers and our regional partners, so.
Go ahead.
I was just, what have you done in the past four years? And what do you want to further do to help support small businesses?
Well, that's, I love downtown, and small businesses are the heart of downtown Camas. We don't have big box stores in Camas. We gave away the 192nd corridor, so this is like the lifeblood, is right in our historic downtown Camas. I think that the state passed some of the highest tax increases in Washington State history, making it difficult for small business owners. I think, I just read a statistic this morning, that Washington State is 27th in business climate. So the, I'm trying to remember exactly what it was. It was the business failure rate for 10 years is some of the highest in Washington State now, so it's difficult. And I don't know, I mean, I'll do everything I can to keep those businesses alive and thriving in downtown Camas, but we have state policies that are making businesses want to leave the state, and that is hurting us. And that that is hurting us.
See, going back just for a second to the Growth Management Act. And Leslie, you mentioned the focus on downtown. Do you foresee annexation?
Yeah, I mean, we have to be smart about this. The act is intended to focus growth in already existing urban dense environments. But we have to plan. We have to plan and be smart about it. I've I've litigated cases with respect to the Growth Management Act. I actually use the Growth Management Act as kind of an example of how I approach every decision making opportunity at council. I ask, is this a problem for us to solve? Meaning, do we have the jurisdiction and authority to to attack this problem? And what are the unintended consequences of that decision? And while I think the Growth Management Act is a great act, I think there were some unintended consequences from the act. We artificially reduced the supply of land, resulting in some of the highest housing costs in the nation now in Washington State. That's a problem. We we have, we have a housing crisis. We have people that cannot afford new homes. And that, to me, is tragic. I have four children. I hope someday they are able to move out of my basement and get into their own house, truly. This isn't just something that I talk about. I live it. You know, I'm looking at my kids going, oh, my gosh, what's going to happen? So for every thousand dollar increase in the price of home, you outprice five hundred people from potentially buying a home. We have to, we have to have smarter solutions. We have to address our young generation. We also, we have a lot of people in campus on fixed income. Who built their home, who raised their children, they want to stay in the community and see their grandchildren grow up. But they're getting taxed out of their homes. So when you look at affordability, it's. Can you get into the house? And then can you stay and remain in the house? These are big problems that people are are having in Washington State. I hear it all the time.
Mas, do you foresee annexation for campus?
Yes, we had annexation in the recently, actually, and the planning commission went through that. The rest of the recent annexation was close to campus high school. That was in R six, R seven zoning, because that was within the campus growing area, among growth area. I wanted, yes, I recommended, yes, for that. Annexation because it just helps our Growth Management Act part of that. And also, it was the zoning annexation at the right place, right zoning for what we need to to do. I wanna add on Growth Management Act that we really have to meet, we comply with the requirements. Because if we don't, we're gonna lose our state funding. We're gonna lose the support from the state. So there's no, we don't wanna challenge that. We definitely wanna comply. One way is annexation, the other way is the small growth. And that comes with making thoughtful planning, making sure where we wanna have that growth. Or high density is at the right location. I just mentioned it earlier. And yeah, definitely, I've been part of the team, working for the past two years. The city of campus was very proactive to make sure we do, we have the plan for it thoughtfully. And that doesn't impact our established neighborhood while providing housing choices. Especially for younger generations. So when they are young adults, they can come and hopefully afford living in campus. Or our older citizens, so our senior residents. We don't want them to force out because they cannot afford living in campus. So our work in planning commission with the city staff is using this Growth Management Act. As a tool to provide housing choices for everyone.
No, thank you. I wanna move on. Recently.
Can I, can I just interject really quickly? Kansas has never been out of compliance with the Growth Management Act ever. But we do have those challenges from the state, the state middle housing laws. I just met a gentleman at Home Depot. He has to have his second job because he's on fixed income. He wanted to put an ADU, which we've approved in campus. On his property, the taxes and fees for that ADU. Before he even started building were over forty thousand dollars. And he said, it's just impossible. He can't do it. But he said if he could build that ADU and use it as a rental, he could quit his job at Home Depot. Which is what he really wanted to do because he's in his mid to late seventies now.
Thank you, Rob. Recently, the city council. Talked about or hinted at withdrawing from C train. Mas, do you think would that be a good idea? Where should the city go in that direction?
As a professional in transportation industry, I believe we need to provide public transportation for our citizens. That's important part of the service that city should provide. Because a lot of people, public transportation is the only way for them to get to job, pay tax. And just avoid homelessness. A lot of students or seniors, they cannot drive, therefore, public transportation is the only way for them. But not just from the the cost effective, also it's a reliable service we have to provide to everyone. The challenge we have with C train, which now city of campus have two line, C train provides two line through campus. The challenge is we are paying annually paying five million dollars to C train. But the service we receive is about two million. I don't know if it's short term data, if they looking at the the campus resident also using outside of city limit services. I myself used to go to Fisher's Landing Transit Center and take the rapid bus to downtown Portland. So I don't know how data, how much that data covers. But that tells me if you are paying five million but receiving only two million of service is unbalanced. Service versus the cost we pay. And that's concerning for campus with the small, small resources we have. That three million dollar difference. I believe is not, the solution is not cutting the service. The solution is working in partnership with a stakeholder, with C train, with the neighboring city to make sure. We have our voice in the region, first of all. We have our seat at the table. And then through the partnership and. Productive conversation, hopefully be allowing the services with the cost we pay.
My understanding is that. According to state law, campus and other small cities have had an oversized voice. On the C train board for years. It's, am I reading that accurately? But so if they've already had this voice, then where does campus go from there?
So, yes, I think we have one or half a seat at the table with Los Angeles. We have one seat. Definitely, I haven't been a part of all the conversation, let me say that. But just cutting the service to me is not a solution. We have to work harder to bring our voices, keep our voices. And then hopefully we find a common ground and move on.
Thank you. Leslie, start with, would you be in favor of withdrawing from C train? Go for that.
Yeah, so I'm intimately aware of this situation. I I follow Tim Hines, our representative on C train, that I watch. As is a former member of the Regional Transportation Council. I've been working on these issues for a very long time. I have over thirty years of experience in transportation issues. And working on transportation issues up in King County and down here. So.
But would you be in favor of?
Well, so this, this actually, so this recommendation pulling out of C train. Pulling out of C train services, that was recommended by Mayor Hogan. He was the first one that that discussed that option. So I believe that Councilmember Hine, along with our city attorney and Mayor Hogan. Really worked closely on the proportionality discussion at C train.
Would you be in favor of withdrawing from C train?
If it made financial sense, if we were able to keep public transportation and provide better options. At a more cost effective way, potentially. I don't like hypotheticals. I'm I'm a city, you know, I'm an attorney. I don't like hypotheticals. I will say, and Mas is right, we pay five million into C train, we get less than two million in services. So with all of that money, we could maybe provide our own transportation system in campus. We only have two lines. We could probably do a better job of providing. Essential services. And look, we we need it. We need public transportation. We do have individuals that rely on the service all the time. I frankly love the current. I think it's great. However, as a city council person, I am one of seven. And I work collaboratively with my peers. I work with the city attorney. I work with the staff. And I work with mayor. And and I think that. If the staff and the mayor made a compelling case, I would definitely look at it.
Thank you, Cole. I just follow in on that. I mean, you've been talking about the that campus has been struggling with its resources. And the the fire authority is one of those aspects where people feel things aren't getting covered enough. I mean, would five million dollars really be enough to start up a transit system? And by?
I'm not the one that suggested it, but I do believe that Mayor Hogan is planning a series of open houses. To hear from the citizens. And I think that's something relevant and something that maybe often goes unseen in today's world. Citizens have have an opinion and we wanna hear from them. And I'm proud that Mayor Hogan is is opening up. City town hall discussions on this matter. Because I think that people need to feel that their voices are being heard. But to answer your question, no, it's not gonna be enough.
Then sort of in following along on that, you mentioned in your voter's pamphlet statement that you authored. The resolution, I believe it was in campus, to oppose light rail on the I five bridge.
Tim Hines and I did that, yes.
And now, why is that? And what is your?
So the light rail portion of the project, first of all, I was just doing. Additional reading this morning. The cost keeps going up and up and up on the entire I B R project. But the light rail portion of it is is. Difficult. I mean, it's voters have voted the light rail portion of it down three separate times. Right now, the project's estimated, I think. Stealing four point eight billion for the bridge, highest estimate is seven point five billion. And Greg Anderson still isn't finished. He says we're gonna have to revisit those numbers either late two thousand five or. Early two thousand six. We don't, so we really don't even know what the price tag is with respect to that project. The light rail portion of it, the last time I really dug into it was a minimum. Just to build the light rail portion of it, two billion dollars for less than two miles. Then the operating costs would be twenty to twenty one million. Annually. This is part of the discussion that led to some of the debate around C train and proportionality, et cetera. Because there was a motion made at the C train board. And again, I don't, I'm not the liaison, I'm not the the sitting member of campus, but I follow it closely. There was a motion made to change the language that C train. Originally, the language was shall not. Help try not fund that project. The motion was made and, and this is on public record too, Tim Hines said, out of good faith, he voted. To modify the language to May. And then, that was in November of last year. Right after that, the price tag came in and everybody was shocked on the C train board. And they felt like they had the wool pulled over their eyes and they were not happy with it. So a lot of things started moving and shaking in that capacity. And a lot of other situations occur with one council or county council member being removed from the C train board. So on and so forth. And then you have that proportionality argument. So I think that's a regional discussion that we have to have. I, Greg, you mentioned that we are overrepresented on on the C train board. I think the majority of the C train board voted. Against the the Wash Dot recommendation. So that's, again, it's an ongoing discussion, but. I feel really good because I've been a part of the discussion. I've been sitting at the table. I've been working with my peers on campus city council. As well as regionally too. So, you know, this is a really important decision and one that you don't wanna change players mid course.
Mas, do you personally favor light rail across the bridge or?
I am in favor of any public transportation because I believe it bring, it matters for our economic development. For for providing a reliable and safe access for the public. The problem became challenging because of the cost to that. This for everyone. So on one side, this is a service we have to provide. The other side, does the cost make sense? I I wish, and my understanding is that. To build I five bridge, the funding requirements comes with providing a public transit. So we don't really wanna lose the the grant funding for the I five bridge. I believe we should continue this conversation. We maybe find other solution that does not really impact the actual project, which is I five bridge. That has to be done as soon as we can. I can get to that more.
So if the the current federal administration decided, well, we're withdrawing this funding, we don't want light rail. Then you would be in favor of that as long as the bridge gets done.
I wanna be practical. Let me get get to that in more detail. So while I am supporting the light railroad, I really wanna understand how much it costs campus. Because we are already paying a high tax. So for the interest of our community, I really wanna make sure we are not putting too much pressure on our taxpayers. Although I'm in favor of public transportation, light railroad, I wanna make sure is we find a practical solution. And we're not putting so much pressure on our taxpayers.
So I think one of the areas, again, I've studied this issue extensively. Light rail isn't the only mass transit option that we have. That that federal grant funding is tied to multimodal transportation, which could be used with bus rapid transit. That could be less expensive, that is more affordable. That would probably get passed by majority of citizens who are just opposed to light rail. Light rail is fixed. It will take up an entire lane of traffic. I think, and the the fact that the Coast Guard hasn't even approved it yet. The pitch is too low. It's, that that's a problem. So again, I think experience matters. And I've been studying this project for a very long time. And I've been working with people on this project. And I think there are creative solutions that people have recommended and we're continuing to work on. But right now, campus unanimously opposed the light rail as is right now.
I'm sorry, just went right out of my brain. I was gonna ask. Pickleball courts. It seems like in campus there is a lot of controversy over the noise from pickleball courts. Is it really an issue? Is there, does the city, are there like steps? Things that need to be taken, done in campus where it comes to recreation facilities? I know it's very important in your city that your recreation facilities, you've got great parks and number of other amenities. Is this, but it's a huge sport. I have neighbors who turned one of their their back, their property into a park or so. Is this something that really does need the city's attention? Is it, seems like people do get kind of worked up on it. So NASA starts.
All right. So first of all, yes, I agree. We have beautiful natural resources. We have lots of, over one thousand acres of green spaces, parks, lots of trees. And recreational facilities. Are they enough? No. But unfortunately, we have not had enough budget to support even maintaining what we already have. We had a struggle. We're getting Crown Park reconstructed. Thankfully, it's ongoing and it's to work finish. But definitely, we need to have more funding, more attention, more our, more support from our community. To first preserve and maintain all these beautiful assets we have. And definitely, if we have more budget, we that we construct and. Bring more other recreational facilities. So I'm a big fan of. So I'm a big fan of any recreation, all my own kids are using a lot of soccer field in uh Camas. And uh understand a maintenance is expensive and we have not uh. Uh supported park and recreational staff with the budget they need.
Now, when when you say you need, the city needs more funding for this or for other items, how do you get that funding? Does that mean higher taxes?
Uh not always uh money, okay, if nobody has all the money in the world. Everybody has limited resources, limited budget, how we manage those uh also, uh it's uh, it comes to play. It comes definitely with discussion, with uh coming up with practical solution. But also, uh just going back to the park, uh one solution, yes, they need budget. But also, uh we can work with other groups that they are willing to uh bring their manpower, their resources. Uh volunteering work, uh such as uh uh Camas Park Foundation is a group that they're willing to help us with. Uh maintaining parks and partnership uh as a volunteer. So we can work with those group, empower them and uh partner with them. So that way, we don't need really to put pressure on general fund more than needed.
All right, Leslie?
I love pickleball, it was uh, it was, it uh started here in Washington State, Joel Pritchard. I mean, I think that's amazing, it's now one of the fastest growing sports in the nation. Um so big fan of pickleball, I I love it, uh my kids play it with me, my parents uh play it. Um they have a a place down in California that they spend some time at uh in the winter. And so my kids always look forward to playing football, I think my husband actually broke his elbow trying to save a ball one time. Um yes, we hear complaints of noise pollution from football courts. Um interestingly, a lot of those complaints uh revolve around Crown Park. Which is odd to me because you choose to move to an area that's right by a park. That used to have a swimming pool, so you, I'm sure in the summer, they heard a lot of noise pollution from the children enjoying the pool area. Um we get complaints about light pollution too. Um there are some individuals that don't want um excessive Christmas lights uh all year. Um or or during the holiday season, so I I think you're always gonna find people uh who have complaints. I, it hasn't become a huge issue uh in Camas. It hasn't, it's not one that I receive a lot of complaints about, I can tell you the issues that I do receive a lot of complaints about. Um I think that people are most. Mostly are upset about the changes at Crown Park. And I'm sure you're well aware of the the pool bond fiasco that resulted in ninety ten. Ninety percent of the citizens voting it down, a lot of people got voted out of office as a result of it. Um it's still a huge issue, I I door knock all the time. And people still are upset about that that pool situation, that they wanted their their Lions Park pool still there in Crown Park. And uh you know, they keep bringing it up, you can go, there's a couple of websites uh online. Here, one is like kind of a Camas Los Chugol historical website. And and again, just comb through the comments and you'll see the pool is still very much alive in people's minds. Um which is unfortunate. Um it's unfortunate because that situation has led to anything with the word bond associated with it. To be scrutinized and you haven't really had a bond that's passed since then. So they voted down the the proposition for police, we voted down the R F A. Um and that, and that's a problem, I think you guys actually, even your editorial board earlier this year. Had come out with an article that said, you know, this year is not a good year to increase taxes for people. Because they're feeling, you know, they're feeling the the squeeze. And that's, again, that's what I'm hearing at the door every single solitary day, is that people just are so sick of being taxed to death. From the state. And that's, that's what our, uh we're in a bind as a municipality to react to that. Because we do have needs, we do have funding needs. Um but if it's on the ballot, people in Camas just don't wanna pass it. Makes a problem.
I I wanna ask, Massa, um uh what is something that Leslie has done on the council, or one way she's voted, that you disagree? Give us an example of something you would have approached different.
Right, so um definitely, uh there there were reasons, that's why I'm running, right? Uh so I uh. In general, I I think it's important, we uh we look at the facts, we research. And we run our uh this seat as a council member, nonpartisan. And just uh making sure we uh pay attention to the need of the community.
You think she's not done that?
So I'm gonna give you a specific uh, specific uh examples. So we're all talking about public safety, but how we show our support for that, i- it shows uh uh which direction we take. Uh recently, when it comes uh that the city uh presented some bonds uh to the council member. That that was going toward the fire station uh renovation. Uh my opponent uh said no, even though we had sixty percent of public uh support for that. So those uh certain um um tax measure when it comes or uh the the bonds or the expenses. It comes uh in front of the council, it's important, be sure our support. That uh it going uh directly toward uh some of the essential services we need.
Okay, Leslie, how would you respond to that?
Well, I one hundred percent disagree, I received the endorsement from the fire union and lock hops. I don't know how, if you know how difficult it is to receive uh an endorsement from the fire union. Uh a couple of other candidates running. Uh both sought out the fire union endorsement and they chose to remain neutral. So I think that speaks volumes uh about the kind of work that I've done and the prioritization for public safety. Um so, you know, I, this is a nonpartisan position. And there is nothing partisan about potholes or pollution in our lake or public safety. And I've really, I have found so much attempt. From some of the supporters of my opponent to make this a partisan situation. Um I work very nicely with everybody on city council, there are times when I disagree with individuals. And there are times where I'm very surprised at who I'm voting alongside with. Um and it just goes to prove that really, honestly, there is nothing partisan about city council, we are issue driven. We're completely issue driven and uh I I I take a little bit of offense to that, I really do. Um I've had people say that somehow I'm against funding the library. That's just a flat out lie, I mean, I'm on public record, they they videotape us every workshop and every uh city council meeting. Uh I am not against the library, I've never voted against library, I've always supported the library. Um I do ask questions from time to time, uh I ask why uh Representative Dave Stevie was able to secure. Two million dollars in state funding for his library. And if if we were missing out on something, those are important questions to ask. And I think those are the tough questions to ask and uh I'm proud of my record, I really am. I am uh always asking good questions, I come prepared, I have a list of questions every single solitary time. I work with staff, uh I. Sometimes even pull consent agenda items, not because I need to discuss them. But because I've been asked by a citizen, why is this on the consent agenda or why are you guys doing this? So pull it for discussion, for public edification. Um so I'm really proud of of the work that I've done and the relationships that I've built. And it absolutely one hundred percent is nonpartisan.
No, and and I I'm just going to lead into, uh I give you your final pitch for why you should be elected, I think you just covered a lot of that. Did you wanna add anything?
I just, I, you know, I've worked really, really hard, this is um, this is a part time position. Um one that I give uh full attention to. I go out of my way to meet with citizens, I can't tell you, I mean, in twenty twenty one, I counted. And I marked it all out on a map that I knocked personally, not a team, personally knocked on five thousand doors. And I continue to do it now, uh I try to make it uh two to three hours every day to go outdoor knocking. Some days don't allow it for whatever reason, but I don't, I don't personally believe there's any other way to lead. Than by being face to face with somebody at their door and asking them what's important to you. I could tell you story after story after story about what I've heard in Camas. And I think that gives me an advantage because when we do a poll or survey. That doesn't necessarily always accurately reflect what I'm being told at the actual doorstep. Um and when you look at our surveys, oftentimes they're done just in the downtown area. And half those people aren't even from Camas, so you're getting kind of a skewed representation there. But yes, so I've spent the past four years working for Camas, I love Camas, I love the fact that I can go to trivia on Tuesday night. Or I can do trivia on Thursday night, I love First Fridays, my daughter is very excited about Boobash coming up. Um I was really excited to help get our tree lighting ceremony back up and running, they closed it down during Covid. And um it's just, it's one of those time honored traditions that people love, and so I fought for that. I'm proud of the unanimous resolutions and ordinances that we passed at Camas and I wanna continue to be people's voice. Uh because it is Camas, Camas' voice and Camas' future that I've been working hard to protect. And I wanna continue to do so.
Great, thank you, and Massa, give us your final pitch for why voters should support.
Sure, thank you, um so uh first of all, I wanna start with my professional experience. As I explained earlier, that the person in construction industry and being familiar with uh. Addressing the infrastructure issues we have in Camas, that's what exactly I do every day at work in my profession. And I wanna bring that experience to addressing the similar situation problems in our city. Also, my leadership style is based on listening, making sure all voices are heard. We collaborate together, if we have to do, we compromise, but making sure uh we come up with a practical solution. That works for the community and not just some uh 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 small group of people. And going back to what I say, I believe this position has to remain uh nonpartisan. My opponent made it very clear, she is very far right. And that was to the disadvantage of our community, uh her sign even shows no toll. Uh no toll uh for I five bridge, it's not the first problem for Camas, we have I uh I two O five bridge to cross. Uh nobody wants to pay tax more, I don't wanna pay tax more, but we really should focus on what uh the community needs are. And uh that's where exactly how I lead, how I run, uh to make sure uh we listen to everyone. We consider our community needs. And uh I believe the combination of my professional experience uh and uh the way I. Uh the my leadership style can be a big difference, uh and that's uh what I can bring. I also wanna add that, that my campaign is a true grassroots campaign. I'm really uh grateful for all the supports I have had, uh for a lot of endorsement I had from either side, right or left. Uh but what matters the most is those endorsements uh were from uh the community, from the people, neighbors, friends. At all uh part of our community in Camas or uh Mark County.
Great, well, thank you, thanks to both of you.